We'll call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call please.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Krapp.
Here.
Menzner.
Here.
Voorhees.
I'll entertain him. Go ahead.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Voorhees.
Support. Roll call please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. Mr. Shipman.
Here tonight by popular demand is our new recreation coordinator, Amanda Bowers, who is going to give you an overview. Yeah, Amanda! Give you an overview of recreation, where we're at today, where she sees it going in the future, and I'm sure she is open to questions and any ideas anybody might have. So Amanda, take it away.
All right, well, thank you.
It just feeds to the camera, so you're good.
Fantastic, thank you. Thank you for inviting me here tonight and welcoming me to the city. I am Amanda, as Mr. Shipman has said, the new recreation coordinator. I'm really here just to provide you a very, very basic update on some great things that we have happening already and so many things that we have coming down the line. First of all, I did want to provide the commission with a couple of hard copy flyers. If you've already seen them online, that's great. If not, and you want to take some and share them with your neighbors and friends, that would be helpful, too. But as you already know, we've gotten things off and running faster than I had thought, and I'm excited about that. So starting out in Wilson in November, we have activities like Kids Fitness Stars in partnership with Stretch and Grove, Macomb County. So kids ages three to six will come out there and do a bunch of fun, healthy exercising for 45 minutes. So if you know anyone, please send them our way. We also have adult tai chi, senior cardio drumming, senior chair yoga, and tonight here, you're hearing it first, we will have pickleball. So yeah, everybody's thrilled about that. That's also going to start in November. The commissioners have the first flyer in their packet tonight. We reserved that announcement for you. But it is the fastest-growing sport in the U.S. We're kind of trending with the times, just some major league pickleball stars like LeBron James and Tom Brady just bought teams. So here we are, Mount Clemens, bringing them into Wilson Gym. Currently, it's going to be twice a week in the morning, but we are looking to grow that into the evenings. I received a message from the instructor tonight who asked me, what do you have available in the evening? So I expect Wilson to be quite busy, hopefully starting pretty soon. So that was great news to hear. As all of you are aware, we do have three indoor facilities here in Mount Clemens: the Karnes Center, Community Center, and Wilson. It is our goal to keep each one of those open and moving forward. We will probably be moving the home base of recreation to the community center as soon as the Mount Clemens Library takes their new space. So that will be the face of recreation. We will be offering programs for all ages everywhere, but hope to keep all the centers open and busy. We are currently working with TCB and plan to continue that partnership with their programs at Karnes. They're already doing amazing things. We just want to build upon that and bring that all together. So kudos to the city for their help and support with that. If anybody, anyone you know, has a talent or a skill that they'd like to share with others, we are looking for help. We can bring them on board. We're excited to talk about how we can help them and how they can help the city. It's just like anywhere else, it's a real struggle to get dedicated people right now to work and find instructors. So if you know anybody who's got a passion or a talent and a skill they'd like to share, they can earn a little extra income doing so by signing on with the city to offer some programs. So please send them our way. That would be fantastic.
Do you want to give them your phone number?
Absolutely. So anyways, the current line is (586) 469-6800. It's extension 520. You can always email A.Bowers, B.O.W.E.R.S, at mountclemens.gov. Some other cool things we have going on that gets the processes in order and the procedures in place for all of this good stuff is we are in the beginning stages of implementation of recreation software. So that will allow us to enroll people for programs, accept money in person and online. It'll also help us to schedule facilities in a way that everyone knows what's going on at all times, in a real-time fashion. That is looking like about a two-month process. We're about two weeks into it. Our target date for opening a recreation website and online payments will be December So once that happens, we will have more of a formalized registration process moving into the winter season, which will encompass programs from January through April. We are also going to be doing some surveys in the next few months. That's something that's coming down the line because we want to know what the people want. We want, we work for the community. We want to hear what they're looking to have out there. We can't make promises, but we can certainly search to see what we can find that meets their needs and services. So we are going to start that process down the line, but it is something moving forward that we will have, we will see more frequent surveys going out just to engage with the community and find out what it is they're really looking for. Activity guides. So our goal is to have one comprehensive type of recreation catalog that's distributed three times a year, starting with the winter season. We are going to have a very small addition of that, but each, each season forward, it will look a little different until we find a standard. We're hoping to get that out to the public between Christmas and New Year, but in order to get that out, we are going to be sending postcards with a QR code home to all the residential addresses so they can scan the QR code, then they'll go to the website and they'll be able to find the activities that we're offering so that they can register and they'll know where we're at, when we're doing it, and how to get involved. So we are working hard behind the scenes to get things up and running, but that's kind of our timeframe for all of that. Hopefully, everyone has by now noticed that we do have a Facebook page. Help us grow our audience. We can get a whole lot more ratings and feedback if we reach 100 followers. We're not too far off. It's only been up for two weeks. I think we're at about 70. So please tell everybody to like and follow us on Facebook so we can find a little bit more about them to help tailor programming. Our Facebook page is Mount Clemens Parks and Recreation, but "and" is not spelled out, it's a symbol. So please, if you're online and you're into that, it would be great to like us and follow us there. All the up-to-date information will be showcased there, and it's going to be impossible to put everything in that brochure because we want to start programs when we have instructors. So there'll be times when things just pop up, and that's going to be the best place to find the information there and on the recreation website and on the city website. So kind of stay tuned, look forward to all that great stuff that's happening. Other than that, it's a privilege to be able to serve the city of Mount Clemens, and I'm looking forward to building a successful all-age recreation program here that everybody can get engaged in.
Does anyone, does anyone have any questions for Amanda?
Welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work already, Amanda. You've been on since August, late August?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it, and we don't, you don't have to stay forever, so we know your son's here, so thank you for, thank you. You don't have to save the whole meeting. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
The motion to adopt the agenda.
Do you have a support?
Support.
Okay. Roll call please.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krapp.
Yes.
Menzner.
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to public participation, what everyone has been waiting for. We will, of course, ask that you give us your first and last name, your full residential address, and you abide by our three-minute rule. We will first address those who are in person, and then we will go ahead and look to see for those folks on Zoom. Do we have anyone on Zoom yet? Okay. And so we will go ahead and get started. We ask that if more than one person approaches the microphone, that you form a line for us. So we'll open public participation at this time.
Go this way.
Can I just update from here?
Just go this way. Come in and go.
Swing in the microphone.
Mickey Weiss, 18200 Terra Drive, Clinton Township. I just want to make an announcement for the Downtown Development Authority. As of Friday, the Mount Clemens Optimists Club has changed their location for their trunk and treat. It will not be at the parking structure, but it will be downtown on McComb Place between Main and North Walnut. They will have it all decorated, and the fire department will be coming with a fire truck to be on Main at the entrance. And they apologize, but they didn't get as many as they needed to fill the parking structure, so we invited them to be part of our Spooktacular Downtown. We still will have the trunk and treat from Pops that will run from 4 until 8, but we are running our Spooktacular from noon until 3. Thank you.
I just want to go ahead and get my little comments out of the way, move out of the way for everybody else. I am happy to report that at the Karnes Community Center today, we just got a donation from Good Sports, which is a national organization that we partnered with during the Project Play Title IX event. We just got a $10,000 donation of a wrestling mat.
Wow, amazing.
With this brand-new mat, we'll be able to restart our Sunday wrestling program. In addition, we are looking to add martial arts and to bring in a women's self-defense course. Currently operating at the center right now, we have our basketball, YDVO Youth Developmental Basketball League that happens on Monday nights and Wednesday nights from 6:00 p.m. till 9:00 p.m. We currently have 120 local kids registered in this program. So if you know that we only advertise the program for three weeks and there's 120 participants, it just goes to show the need for recreation and how happy we are to have Amanda here in the city of Mount Clemens. Additionally, we have a Tuesday morning at 11:00 a.m. at the Karnes Community Center, we have a sewing class. So if there's anyone who likes to, these classes are absolutely free of charge. Thursday morning at 11:00 a.m., there is a ladies' crocheting class that happens at the center. Saturday afternoon, starting at 4:00 p.m., from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., we have our men's adult recreational basketball league that happens every week at the center, and there's something else that I'm forgetting, but maybe next time. Thank you guys very much.
Hi, Diana Avenue, 26 Riverside Drive. Thank you, Amanda and the city, for bringing back recreation. I think it's awesome. And also, can we fill this room for every meeting like this? I think this is pretty cool. Okay, so I wanted to thank Mayor Krapp for holding the State of the City on Friday morning at the Karnes Community Center. I thought it was perfect, and I would like to thank Commissioner Voorhees for coming and wonder where the rest of the commission was. The table was completely empty. It was really kind of sad to see. So hopefully, you'll be there for the residents this Thursday night at 7:00 p.m. They deserve to see who they elected during the State of the City, so I look forward to that. And I also wanted to say that I'm very proud to support our library and the millage, and I can't wait to have drag queen storytime. I wanted to publicly state that I think objecting to having LGBTQ books in the library is really kind of sad. We can start burning books again and maybe go on Witch hunts later if you'd like. I think it's really kind of sad that that's, this is even an issue and that we have to be here in support of that event. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Karen Bates Gager, 147 Ludwig. I know this body has no say in what happens at the library, but I too saw what happened at the last meeting and was kind of appalled that this would happen in our city. I guess you read quantum physics, doesn't make you a scientist. You read cookbooks, doesn't make you fat, and reading LGBTQ books doesn't make you gay. I was kind of ashamed of our city, what happened at the last meeting. The library is there for everybody, and it may be a parent's decision to decide what books and what materials their children get. What you give your child and what I give my child may not be the same, but the purpose of the library is to be there for everybody. It's meant to be inclusive. It is not meant to put one group against another group or one person's beliefs against another person's beliefs. Drag queen bingo, great. Kids are reading. Who cares who's reading the book? And if you don't like it, don't go. Go to the library, check out the books that you feel your child should read, and I will check out the books that my child or my grandchild should read. But at the point where somebody's deciding that for me, then I have a problem, and I think a lot of people in this room have that problem. So again, I know this is not your purview, but I wanted to say publicly that I too support the librarian and the library, the millage, and everything that is happening there. I want there to be inclusive books in our library. It is there for everyone's use and not just to select few people. This is not Nazi Germany. We do not ban books. We do not burn books. Again, I am stunned by what I saw at the last meeting. So again, inclusivity for all, books for all, reading materials, videos, all of it for all. You can decide what your children see. You do not need the police to police that. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Taylor. I live at 225 Northbound Crashit in Mount Clemens, Michigan. After the last seat commission, I was also dismayed at the hatred in the universe that was shown to some of our fellow residents and others. I created a sign-up sheet for others to sign to state that we believe in an inclusive and more diverse Mount Clemens to share with the city commission. And then I realized, that wasn't your job. It's not the job of the mayor or the city commission or the city manager. It's everybody's job to be respectful to each other. I'm a member of the Mount Clemens Beautification Committee, and our logo is to make Mount Clemens a more beautiful place, and the way we do that is by respecting each other and listening and understanding. Thank you.
My name is Anthony Karhoff. I reside at 5110 East Exchange Road, Bancroft, Michigan, between Flint and Lansing. I'm here tonight because I support public education and public libraries. I have 18 years in emergency services and as an elected official, I was. I heard what was going on, and I, it just appalled me. It kind of reminded me back to the segregation of our country where blacks and whites couldn't use the same fountains, the same, you know, restaurants and stuff like that, and seeing how a library is a function for knowledge, not just for certain groups, but for everybody. We go there to learn our history, our past, and what do we do? We build on that towards the future. I mean, if we hide a certain group from one another, we're no good in a communist country. Myself being gay and being one of the very few public servants that are and openly about it, you know, it really took to heart when I saw the YouTube video of what happened last week. I didn't come out until 2016. I was on the verge of suicide. I was hearing all these slurs of this and that, racial slurs, and all I could think was, how could I make a positive impact in my community? Well, I served my community as a volunteer part of her, but I also did it as an elected official, too. And seeing how some people can say that this person can't do this because of this, well, if you don't like it, don't do it. If you don't want to see it, don't look it up. I know that there's plenty of educational books out there for youth, for teens, and for adults, and I support the library. I support all libraries being very open about public education. There's a lot of good resources out there, and to earmark one area out, we're going back to racism, blacks versus whites. That's what this is, it's looking like. A library is a place of peace and learning. Just because someone wants to dress as a woman or a man wants to, or a woman wants to dress as a man, that doesn't bother me. It's what they feel like inside, that's what they want to dress. I have no problem with a man wearing high heels or a woman dressing like a farmer. I'm a farmer, okay? I know lots of straight, gay, bisexual, you name it whatsoever. They're good people, and but for someone to say that they're rapist or they're, they're a danger to society, they're not. There's more suicide in veterans, but guess what's catching up? Youth suicides because they're afraid to be who they are. And the one thing I like to spread, love is love, no matter what, and we can't hide that from our community. If you want to build a community that is peaceful and kind and transparent, we need to be open. And I'm here, I drove an hour and a half because, you know, it's very important that youth public can provide that.
Eric Rick, 1689 Hampton, Mount Clemens, Michigan. And I'm here to talk about the same thing everyone else is here to talk about. A need to get the information out there about the water plant and the water renovation system. I think it's important that we tell the story of our current water plant in the Clementine, put together an actual press release, get it out to the citizens, and maybe pay to have it posted like we do the minutes of the meetings and stuff in the McComb Daily, maybe the Detroit News. This is a, this is the biggest financial decision the city is going to make for 100 years, and we had maybe three people here that are interested in it and about 50 here that are here to advocate for their social issues that you have a very limited role in. I get the importance of it to everyone involved, but the city commission needs to make a 15 to $50 million decision, and the citizens need to know why that decision's being made, what the current state of the plant is, the crazy efforts that have been made to keep that thing running, and what their options are going forward. The decisions that you're going to be making shouldn't be a surprise to citizens just because they don't watch the YouTube video of the meetings. Thank you.
There was so much information that we wanted to convey to you last time we were here, and now I was able to bring kind of the rest of the story. To counter the myth that we are library haters, I just wanted to say that among us are some of the heaviest users of our library. Dana, one of the librarians, a few months ago, laughed and said, "I've never seen somebody with 100 books out on their card." That was my family. We had been there twice a week, sometimes three times a week. The most common call to my cellphone was the librarian telling us we have more books to be picked up. I used to brag about the Mount Clemens Library. I said that for the new release movie, you may want to go to Clinton McComb. It's big, it's wealthy, but you would be surprised how many of the gems that I am looking for out of all the libraries in the area, there at our little library in Mount Clemens. We're trying to raise our kids with really well-written books, and so we've checked out many of them, and when I went to look those back up, I confess to you that I was and I am sick at heart that 16 of those 19 books that I looked up are gone. I suppose they're in the city dump. This is just one family, and I'm going to read the names of those books to you that are no longer in our library. Green Ferry Book by Andrew Lang, Sealed Orders by Agnes Sanford, the only one left in the Suburban Library Cooperative that's 27 local libraries. Now It's Fall by Lois Linsky. My kids used to read that every fall out of the library. It's in the dump. The four-volume set of The Tales of Uncle Remus by Julius Lester. Abraham Lincoln's World by Genevieve Foster. That was a brand-new copy. The Princess and the Goblin by George MacDonald. There are two available now in the entire Suburban Library Cooperative. They are both checked out, and our copy is gone. American Tall Tales by Stoutenberg. The Pharaohs of Ancient Egypt by Payne. One left in the entire Suburban Library Cooperative. It's checked out, and our copy is gone. Water Buffalo Days, Growing Up in Vietnam by Kwong Young Hun. Miss Happiness and Miss Flower by Rumor Garden. Robin Hood by Pyle. Pilgrim's Progress by Bunyan. The Family Under the Bridge by Carlson. The Wheel on the School by De Jong. Paddle to the Sea by Holling. And about 24 books by Walt Disney's creative collaborator, Will Pete, sorry, Bill Pete, my mistake. Last time, one of the commissioners thought that she had found Mark Twain's Huck Finn online. That was an abridged version, and I hate to say, but that's exactly our point. The originals are gone. Our library is dying, but we would be the first to be thrilled if you can revive it.
Carol Jarko, I live at 123 South Wilson in Mount Clemens. We are here with new information tonight to ask you to return our Mount Clemens Public Library to the influence of Representative Democracy. A commissioner has said that the city commission has no power to remedy the situation at our library. The statement led us to see that the authority structure in a district library such as ours has not been revisited in our city for a long while, approximately 28 years. So tonight, we will go over the scope of your authority as contained in the Library Board of Trustees bylaws, the District Library Agreement, and the District Library Establishment Act of 1989, according to which our library was set up. Specifically, we are here to ask you, as we will ask the school board, to revise the DLA to contain a three-year millage renewal period and to change the library board structure so that these members are elected, not appointed. First, a little background. It is our understanding that the District Library Establishment Act of 1989 must be an expression of the legislature's commitment to protect libraries as storehouses of culture against the overzealous hatchet of financial conservatives, as well as of the library association's successful lobbying efforts. In 1989, the legislature overrode Michigan Attorney General Democrat Frank Kelly to allow library millages to be passed without any term limit specified. Very unfortunately, as we detailed last minute, some libraries have taken this prodigious act of trust of the legislature and have quietly morphed into something we think and hope the legislature never foresaw, vehicles of an agenda that many on both sides of the political aisle take strong exception to. As we showed last time we came before you, this changing identity is not a grassroots movement, but is being encouraged top-down by the American Library Association, the Michigan Library Association, and the Library of Michigan. In conclusion, I would like to add a personal note. I recently read a Facebook comment by one of the people on this commission. It wasn't malicious, it wasn't disrespectful, but it stated that she believed our group had an issue with the LGBTQ community. I assure you, this is not true. I will state once again, we acknowledge the dignity and worth of each person, LGBTQ or otherwise. Make no mistake, this discussion is about parental rights. We are loca. Leave our kids alone.
To our current situation, we found out that a short five years after legislature corrected, created this extraordinary loophole to allow libraries a millage with no term limit in 1994, our city naively passed just such a millage. So it appear that until you act, we are giving this director a cool 1.5 we are giving this director a cool $1.5 million a year, a very generous $2.75 mils, and telling him, "Go have fun", with no current or future accountability to the community. You, along with the school board, are the ones who have the power to return the library to responsiveness to the people. Would you please open your packets to the District Library Agreement, which is the first document? We have highlighted relevant sections of these documents in your packets. They are for you to keep. The District Library Agreement, the foundational document of a district library such as ours, names the Mount Clemens Community School District and the City of Mount Clemens as the parties to this agreement. That, of course, means all of you. Article 13 on page 5 of that same agreement specifies that this District Library Agreement may be amended in writing upon the constant of the governing bodies of each parties. You again, you have the power to remedy this problem in coordination with the school board. Thank you.
Matthew 48, 165 Laurel Avenue. Currently, as we've discussed last time, the city commission appoints three members of the library board. But Section 4 of the District Library Establishment Act allows you to opt to have the library board members elected rather than appointed. This is highlighted in the second document in your packet. Section 4, Part 1. The agreement shall provide for all the following. And Part C says, "The creation of a board to govern the operation of the district and the method of selection of board members, whether by election or appointment." This is another possible way for you, our elected city officials, to improve the accountability of the library to the citizens. We believe that this would be a big, one big step in helping the library director and board remember that the connection and responsiveness they must maintain with their community. And we ask you, as we will ask the school board, to jointly make this change. We also ask that you roll back the misstep of our community made back in 1994. At that time, as we said before, the city voted a generous millage for the library with no term limit. That move severed the responsiveness to the community in a really dangerous way. And given the newness of that provision of that law, we suspect that the residents probably didn't even realize that the lack of a specified term meant that the library would never have to come back to them for further approval. Today, we ask you, as we will ask the school board, to revise the District Library Agreement to specify that the millage renewal period from here on out will be two or three years. Though library millages overwhelmingly pass throughout the nation, this measure would ensure that the library, again, become responsive to the community. This would be the best solution of all. We look forward to working with you to return our library to representative democracy in protecting our citizens' voice and preserving our 150-year-plus, 150-years-plus-year-old library as a valuable resource to our community. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Oh, I guess we can. Hi, my name is Joe Barber, and I recently just moved back to Mount Clemens. My address is 5 Roseview Boulevard. I moved to Roseville about six years ago, and I was very lucky to have the opportunity to move back in. And it seems that I moved in at an opportune time, because everybody's so engaged with the city right now. I really appreciate it. So thank you, everybody, for coming, and thank you for whoever they have these flags. These are nice. I pull them out of my pocket while I'm broken. What's confusing to me here is the sudden shift of a very socially conservative rhetoric moved to now a more bureaucratic one. The rhetoric at the last meeting, which thank you to whoever uploads everything to YouTube and Apple Podcasts, made it very easy to find. Thank you.
Diane the back.
Get them a candy bar. If they want, if they don't want, give them a puppy, I guess. So we see this incredibly, frankly hateful rhetoric about the books and about the LGBTQ community. But now it's, "No, no, 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 it's not about that. It's about our control of the library." Whose control is it? You say representative democracy. There were 400 signatures on their petition last time. That is .033% of the voting age people in Mount Clemens. That's not representative democracy, not even close. And when we talk about the removal of materials from a library, or a school, or wherever they want to go next, we're talking about an erasure. And that's exactly what this is. This is an erasure of culture, of people, of what they do, how they exist. And they do exist, every year, all over the place, all the time, and they always have. And that's all there is to it. You're seeing the demographic shift because the world changes. It changes constantly, and it's always moving. You can be on the internet and reload pages and see the whole world change right before your eyes. It happens so quickly. And the best thing that you can do in those situations is to look at it openly. Try to understand it, hope that you can. But understanding is not a prerequisite of acceptance. And what we need is more acceptance, what we need is more materials. And to books disappearing from the library, I hate to hear that, I really do. I want more books in the library. I'll donate all of my own if it'll help, really. Because it's important. It's important that we share these resources, not just as educational materials, but as record of having been here, of having existed, what we did, and what we intend to do. And as we move forward, we have to make sure that we do so considering the lives of other people. And always asking ourselves, "And what I'm going, and, excuse me, is what I'm going to do today going to help me and help the people around me? Is it going to bring...?" Is that a smile at the time? Thank you.
Diane Cubic, 93 Riverside Drive. I tried to keep my mouth shut today. I agree with what he said. Watching the last meeting was absolutely horrifying. I watched it once, and I went back and I watched it with Google open on a split screen. What in the world was that? We are not the only community who's going through this. The thing is, though, we could rise above all the other communities, sit down at a table, and figure out how to make this work for everyone, because we all live here. The blacks, the whites, the old, the young, and every color of the rainbow. And it embarrasses me and makes me mad that somebody doesn't want to have everyone in this community represented. I am appalled by that behavior. It's bad to teach our children that. When they brought up Jamestown and how they defunded their library, my first thought was the little kid in the lunchroom who trashes the whole thing because he didn't get pizza. We're the adults here. We're supposed to be the leaders. We need to lead everybody together. And that won't happen if we ban books. And the hatred that came out at that last meeting, I was waiting at the end for a call for back-of-the-bus and supper-drinking fountains. It made me sick. This is not how we treat other human beings. Grow up. Let's act like a community, and let's be leaders in this planet on how everybody can work together. Thank you.
My name is Junia Querio. I live at 39 Lincoln, Mount Clemens. I was a developmental kindergarten and first-grade teacher. I've lived and taught in Mount Clemens. When I heard what had happened, I decided I was going to go to the readings. I went to three of them. I listened to 15 books. Every single one of them was appropriate. Never did it downgrade someone or put someone in a position that was inappropriate. The one I liked the best was the story of families. A momma and a dad and a child. A grandma and two kids. A momma and a daddy, no, I'm sorry. A mommy and a mom and a child. A daddy and a dad and a child. And how families lived together, how they worked together, and how they lived together. I was impressed by the stories that were read, and I wanted to make sure I knew what was happening. I think it's the parents' responsibility to make the choice of what they want to do. Thanks.
Angel Beckett, 118 Canfield. I'm a new resident here to Mount Clemens. And what I have to say is pretty much always positivity. Thank you all and this community. I love being a resident here. I'm a mother of four children. I am a self-retired special ed teacher. I have done therapy, of course, back riding, and have our own nonprofit for the last 30-some years. I've worked with children with disabilities, children and adults with disabilities. I have been so proud of this community. My children got to attend the pride parade. They've got to attend so many things here. And the one thing this community and Mount Clemens, whether which side you're on, is love. We do not hate. We accept all for who they are. You may not like the books. You have the choice of not going to the library. But this is how my children learn, and thank you. Thank you for providing this library. Thank you for the millage. Thank you for the recreation. I come from large communities. I wanted to come to Mount Clemens, what is that, a 4x1 square area? And in all the places I wanted to retire and raise my children was right here. And we are not going anywhere because this community is love. We need to come together, guys, not split apart, okay? Don't like the books, don't go. But books, music, this, we can't stop our children from learning this. We need to be right behind them. We need to show that we're supporting them. The big world out there, that's what's going against your children. I heard some comments from the last thing. The one that bothered me the most as a mom, which I'm most proud of, "Do you expect us to watch our children when they're up?" I hope so, because I try to be a mom to not just mine, but all of yours. And if I see a child, we need to nourish them and let them grow. Thank you for letting me take a moment just to share.
Hello, I'm Haven Pfeffer Seaman. I live at 19 Lodwick. I'm just here to support our library director, our children's librarian, the drag queen storytime, having representation of LGBTQ individuals in our children's area. That's my family, that's my friends. We deserve representation and not to be erased. People keep talking about respect. Respect is representation. It's not pulling people out of a library. And what message are you sending? If books about my family, my friends, don't belong in the library, in the children's section, what do you think people think that they probably don't belong there? That's what you're saying to them. You're saying they don't belong in the children's area, that they don't belong in the library. I'm just very grateful to our librarian for representing everybody. And I hope that one day, the people who are saying that people don't have the right to be there are to be represented. I keep hearing, "Be careful the hate you speak, because it could be someone you love." And I really think that is something you need to think of, because a lot of people have said a lot of ignorant hateful things to me, not knowing who I care about. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jim Kopus. I live at 126 New Street. I moved into Mount Clemens 50 years ago. And I hear all these fine people talking about the books and stuff like that, but I don't think that's the main issue that I'm hearing tonight. And I think people are ignoring the fact. There's a group of people here that want to hold our library hostage by having elections every two to three years. I spent 50, almost 40-some years teaching, and we have to go through millages all the time. So we give all the money that we have to spend for elections, all the money that we have to stop with what we're doing to get funding. And it's amazing that we pass those millages and the library does not have to come back all the time to spend money to do an election, to spend money to inform people just to have a vote, so you can hold the people hostage every two years. Though, we have to come back, and we have to talk to the community, which gives people like that I hear tonight a chance to degrade and put responsibility and on the people that are running this system. I have lived here, again, I said 50 years. The library has been awesome. It has been a focus of this community. My kids used it. They're now 45 and 46, but they used it. And when they went to school, they've used it other times. And I don't want to see our community have to go back, our library, to go back every two to three years under this quote, "representative" kind of blanket, because that's not representative. That's just another way of stopping the progress that we got in this city. It's, I'm sorry, but that's just the way I feel at this point.
Hi, I'm Sheila Cahoon. I live on Rummick in Clinton Township. It's my first time here.
Can we have your full address, please?
Oh, 23067 Rummick, Clinton Township.
Thank you.
I am a Moms for Liberty rep, and we've been dealing with this for two years. We, I wish everybody would learn to just get along and try to come to the table. There's so many people that have represented that this evening and said, "Let's just find a way to get along and figure things out." Because that's how the United States does things. We get together and we figure things out. And that's what we need to do, okay? Nobody's banning books, nobody's lighting books on fire or anything like that right now, okay? Parents like me don't want pornography shown to our kids in any library that is accessible to them. That's children 5 to 18. I wouldn't expect my child to walk into a pornography store and see that content and be allowed to do that. They shouldn't be allowed to do that in a public library or a school, okay? That's all that's simply being stated. Nobody from my group, no parents that I know, have ever spoken a word of hate. I don't see a non-inclusive person in this room. I don't. Everybody is polite and talking to each other. There's some people that are very emotional right now in speaking as such. But if we can all calm down enough to come to the table together and speak about these issues, we'll learn what we do best in the United States, and that's come to an agreement together with everyone, all parties, involved. I just want you guys to know that you're doing a great job. What you're dealing with now, and what we're dealing with after COVID, is craziness. And you guys are all doing your best, okay? So keep up the good work. I will continue to speak up for not only my child, but the children that I represent. in my community of people, but nowhere in our world should our children ever be shown pornographic images or pornographic words in any school setting in any public library. And the last thing I'll say about the Drag Queen Storytime is I wouldn't expect a Chippendales dancer or a Go-Go dancer to be at a public library doing their thing to the children, just the same as a person that does Drag Queen is there for entertainment and pretty vulgar entertainment does theirs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time in person?
I just got to say that.
Sorry, first and last name.
My name is Jeff Jance. I live at one oh seven Miller. I'm a father of two who can't went to the library. I think as a parent, it's my responsibility to decide what my kids read at the library. I also think that if a man wants to dress like a woman, that doesn't seem vulgar or inappropriate to me. I think it's important for my kids to see all kinds of people in this world. And what's the big deal? It's a dress. If you put that the same place as you put a Chippendale dancer, that makes me wonder what you define as pornography. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the commission at this time?
One more. Come on, we got to make it even twenty.
I can go again.
All right. Well, anyone on Zoom? Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. We will move on to administrative responses, which it doesn't appear that there are any at this point, and we will move to a motion for the approval of the minutes.
Motion approved. City Commission meeting minutes on October third and work session on October tenth, 2022.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. I'll call the roll, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to general business. Item A, Human Resources Director, Mr. Shipman. Oops, sorry, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to confirm the city manager's appointment of Nicole Ratusnick to the position of Mount Clemens Human Resources Director.
Support. Okay, now, Mr. Shipman.
Human Resources Director Jennifer Deloitte resigned from her position on September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two pursuant to Mount Clemens City Charter. The city manager's appointment of Nicole Ratusnick to the position of interim Human Resource Director is being presented for city commission confirmation. Mr. Tuznik has six years of previous administrative human resources experience. Upon hire as a confidential executive secretary in the city manager's office over two years ago, Mr. Tuznik assisted the Human Resource Department in various tasks. In early two thousand twenty-one, she was promoted to payroll and benefits coordinator. Additionally, Mr. Tuznik has earned a bachelor's degree in human resource management. Mr. Tuznik is administration's preferred candidate for this important role as a result of her background, knowledge, skills, and experience with the city and its human resources department. Mr. Tuznik's annual salary will be sixty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, are there any questions or comments?
Welcome.
I have a question regarding her current role.
Okay, yes.
Are we going to post that or is it rolling into her new role?
So it's in her position that we're going to do for six months. And at the end of six months, if administration, as well as Mr. Tuznik, are willing to go forward, then she will be the permanent director.
Who's filling her current role?
So currently, her role is being filled by my administrative assistant, Teresa Bryant.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing or seeing none? Call the roll, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Hammond.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Menzer.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Tonight, we have nothing on the consent agenda, so we'll go ahead with the city manager's report. Mr. Shipman. Too quick for you? Sorry.
No, the computer's really slow. Give it a second. It's not loading.
Here.
You can read it.
No, no.
Yeah, mine's not loading. All right. State of Mount Clemens Community Event will be held at the Kearns Community Center on Thursday, October twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, beginning at seven P. M. There is no charge and all are invited to attend. The fire department is in the process of establishing an eligibility list to hire firefighters to fill two vacancies. Please go to the city website under the employment tab for more information. Mount Clemens Fall Apparel, featuring the new logo, has arrived. Items may be purchased through the city manager's office. Mount Clemens will be setting up the fifth annual tinsel tour uptown this year. We can't wait to see the city light up for the holiday season. The packets to sponsor and decorate a tree will be available online or through the city manager's office on October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. The Mount Clemens Recreation website is expected to be up and running by December first, two thousand twenty-two. A full calendar of events and online registration will be available. Please go like our new Mount Clemens Parks and Recreation Facebook page to stay up to date. We are also in need of instructors for youth and adult programming. If interested, please call five eight six four six nine sixty-eight hundred, extension five two zero. The annual skeleton competition hosted by the Mount Clemens Beautification Committee is in full swing. This year's theme is Monster Mash. There are twenty-three entries in the competition. The skeletons will be on display at participating downtown businesses throughout October and early November.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Shipman? All right, hearing none, we will go ahead and move on to public participation. This is the second portion of the meeting that you are allowed to address the commission. We invite you to come forward, give us your full name and abide residential address and abide by our two-minute rule. And we will again go in person and then Zoom if there's anyone.
Hi, Diana Avenue, twenty-six Riverside Drive, Mount Clemens. The Santa Parade is fast approaching, so for everybody watching on Zoom, we are still in need of volunteers. We are almost to our fundraising limit, but we're also taking sponsorships and banner sponsorships, which are super popular this year. You can reach me at two four eight seven six zero two zero one five, or you can just go to the mountclemensantaparade.com and you can do everything electronically. We would love to have more representation marching down the street. We're excited to have the people that we have so far. It's going to be one of the biggest parades to date, and we are looking forward to having everybody on November nineteenth downtown Mount Clemens. Thank you.
Ten a.m.? Ten a.m.? Ten a.m., if you're coming to watch. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the commission at this time? Anyone on Zoom? Nope, okay, never mind. Sorry.
Okay, first of all, I just want to say thank you to everybody. It's not easy being elected official. You guys got your hands.
Can you just state your name again? Sorry, it's okay.
My name is Anthony Karhoff, K-A-R-H-O-F-F. My address is fifty-one ten East Exchange Grove, Bancroft, Michigan. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody. It's not easy being elected official. You guys have hard choices. Millages are another thing, too. I want to reiterate, public education, it should be open and free to all who want to view it and see it. Parental guidance is another thing, just like television. They put the ratings on TV where let parents know that this is rated for certain age groups. Libraries, same thing. They have nonfiction, fiction, child's, youth, adult sections. And, you know, it's an opportunity for parents to be responsible for their children. By segregating out one educational form over another, we turn back into the, we refer to nineteen thirty when the Nazis burned all the books when they were going through because it didn't fit their way. We're a new society. We're free. We're Americans, home of the brave. You know, that's what we are. I wouldn't be where I am today. I grew up with Asperger's and, well, ADHD. To get me to speak when I was a kid, there was no way I could have done it without four-H and FFA. And then growing up, learning who I was and where I fit in in life, it took time, it took courage. But there was also dark times. But I did read some books. I did have some good counselors and good people to talk to, to help me guide me through my dark times. But to stand here and have some people say, it's bad, it shouldn't be, it's wrong, it's against the Bible, or this or that, well, that's wrong, too, because America's that. We make our choices. We work together. We find a way to work with each other, to live with each other. This is America. Let's work together. We're family.
Thank you.
Brayden Bowman, one fifty Cass Avenue, home address seven nine zero Maple Vista in Emily City. I'd like to take a moment to thank everybody here for showing up to support the library and being inclusive, what is one of our major goals. Some things are kind of taken out of context as far as books being removed from the library. As part of our material selection policy, which is something that we update regularly, it is our duty to remove books that are not being checked out and are not circulating to make way for new materials to come in. So books that are not checked out in a certain amount of time, it depends by subject, we will remove them to provide space for the new books to come in. We cannot possibly warehouse all the books that we have ever purchased. We would not have the space, nor will the books hold up that long in many cases. So it is really hard to get to the point where you could actually warehouse those books. As we are going through also, if the books are not available in our library and they're not available in other books, other libraries in the cooperative, it goes to show that those books are probably no longer being used by the citizens in those communities. So one of those things is as books go out of style, new books come, and that's how it goes. We do not remove books based off of content. We do not remove books based off of our beliefs. There are lots of books in our library that I don't agree with personally. They're not books that I would pick out or check out, but it is not my prerogative to remove those books based off of my opinions. Our job is to provide materials based on the needs and wants of our citizens who come into the library every day and tell us what they want. We have suggestion boxes. We have, you know, soon to have an ability on our webpage where people can make virtual suggestions on things. If people come and ask us to add materials, we are always willing and glad to have those conversations. That is our preferred thing is to add books, not remove them. Thank you.
Gene Forty-Eight, one six five Floral Avenue, Mount Clemens. The sixteen books that I read off to you, my family has checked all but, I believe, three of those out within the last, most of them, probably eleven of them, within the last three or four years. You notice that the ones that I said were very limited in their availability throughout the suburban library cooperative, those were also the ones that also happened to be checked out right now. I do not think that it was a lack of demand for that book. I would also just like to add that Mount Clemens, the children's section had a, like a very impressive, you know, the kind of the floor-to-ceiling bookcases, and there were either two or three of those segments, floor-to-ceiling, well, not ceiling, but maybe about this height, of folk stories and fairy tales. And I, this is a bit of hearsay because we have not been able to go back into the library. I've heard it's down to one shelf. This is not because books are not being checked out. Mr. Bowman expressed those criteria in a public February two thousand twenty meeting, and those criteria have gone on to be broken again and again and again.
Thomas Barnes, two ninety-one Jones Street. First comment I would like to talk about Eric and how the fact we had Great Lakes Water Authority here talking about this huge decision that needs to be made over the water plant. And there were three people here, but we're talking about books in the library, and the whole room is packed. So it just goes to show that we are not really as involved in the decision-making around our drinking water that we feed to our children and to our plants, but we are very interested in these books at the library. My daughter has kind of became the face of the struggle. My ten-year-old daughter, Tiana, loves the Mount Clemens Public Library. She loves Drag Queen Storytime. As a black father with mainly straight children in my household, it was shocking to me at first, like really shocking to me. But I was educated through a neighbor in my community who, him and his husband, who live across the street from me, told us about their lives and the struggles that they had been through. They gave us a new perspective on the struggle that some of our neighbors share that we don't ever really get to talk to or get to see. During those times in the pandemic, Chris Kip and his husband, Richard, shared with us a lot about their lives, and it opened me and my family up to a completely different way of thinking. I've been working with youth for twenty-two years, and I would be lying to you if I told you I worked with all straight youth over twenty-two years. Actually, one of the children in my program that I'm most proud of is Amaria Hardwick, who is a transgender young woman. Very proud of what that took to come out for her and how she struggled with that. I believe library, like school system, like recreation in this city hall needs to be a place that shows inclusivity for everything, for everybody. We all have a place here. And I know that I've been the one that has taken it to this board on more than one occasion, but I'll tell you that every member of this board has respected my opinion and sat and talked us through it. So thank you.
Do we have anyone else? Okay.
Hello, Ruthie Stevenson, sixty-nine Bain Street. I remember some years ago, there was a young lady, was a pastor at our church. She came in and she had this sermon that says, what you going to do now? I'm hearing from both sides and, you know, I come from the old school of thought, you agree to disagree. Then you have to come together to have meaningful conversation. I keep hearing some of your speakers bring up the struggles of African-Americans. Just think, if African-Americans had stepped back and said, you know, keep fighting one with the other, nothing would ever been resolved. And guess what? It still hasn't been resolved. We're still having meaningful conversations, and that's what this room needs to do. You need to come together to have conversations about issues that you probably don't understand. You have to learn from one another. You have to know, you know, to say that he's gay, he's bi, he's this. We're just learning from what somebody told us. Do we know the real story? Do we understand the ramifications of what's being imposed on us, to us, and through us? True, there are some things I would not allow my children to have, and I'm a Gigi. And if you don't know what that means, that's a great grandma. And the oldest, she's in the eighth grade. There are some things I do not allow her to even see, do, or be part of, and some of this wouldn't. But we still have to have, we still have to have conversation, meaningful conversation about issues that we don't understand. You don't understand about racism. You don't understand about discrimination. You don't understand about being older or younger or whatever. So we, in order to get around those ramifications, we have to talk, talk. We can't sit on this side of the room or that side of the room and still make snide remarks going back and forth. That doesn't solve the issue. So let's come together to have some meaningful conversation.
Is there anyone else who would like to? Okay, hearing none. We're going to go ahead and move on to commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, I want to comment on the two emails that we got regarding blighted properties. The one came on May thirty-first, and the other one came October twen- The one came on May 31st, and the other one came October 12th regarding a property on Comet. And the owner sent us an email regarding this property and when it was going to be cleaned up. We have since talked about a new blight process. I went by that property again today, and the Tyvek is flying off the house and everything. It hasn't changed a bit in five months. We've, I've talked about this over and over again. We need to act quickly. I've said, I've talked about Sterling Heights, how they act very quickly. I want to know where we're at in our process, and when is this property going to get cleaned up? I mean, it is a travesty that there's Tyvek boarded up windows, and it hasn't changed in years. So, where are we at on the process, and when is this property going to get taken care of? This lady called me again today and said, "Are you going to ask about it?" And I said, "Yes, I will." So, here I am, asking about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hammond.
Thank you. October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and just want to remind everyone to do self-breast exams and schedule your mammogram. Also, since Glenn is not here, I'll remind everyone to vote early if you can. An election date is Tuesday, November 8th. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
As I sit here and listen to everyone tonight, first of all, thank you, Eric Rick. I think you hit the nail on the head again. You are, you should be our publicly relations guy or whatever, but probably one of the biggest issues that we have right now is our water plant and what we're going to do with it. And everyone will get very, very upset if, you know, there's a lot of emotion about owning that water plant and having it here in the city, and, but we also have to look at what it costs, and, and we want to continue to provide that water. It's a huge issue, and it's a scary issue for this commission. I, it's, so I hope you all get involved with that a little bit more as well. But going to the issue of the night, I, I'm struggling with what was presented at the last committee meeting and how it's kind of morphed this meeting. It started out with drag queen story hour, and it got bigger last meeting in terms of way of life, and this time now, we're down to, we've got to control the library. So, I'm struggling. You said that we have the power to remedy the problem. I'm not sure what the problem is right now. I represent all of you. I represent all of the people in Mount Clemens, and I am proud to represent every one of you, whether you're gay, whether you're bi, whether you're a drag queen, whether you're straight, whatever it is, black or white. And I think that we do, all need to step back a little bit, and Mr. Bowman, I'm glad you spoke up, but I think you need to have some discussion with, open discussion with people that we can sit down and talk about what's going on, because I, I do respect what you have done, and I don't believe for a minute you're banning books, you know, willy-nilly. And so, I think there has to be some more discussion about this. But as a commissioner, I am limited, you know, you're bringing this to the commission, and we, the commission, have limited amount of what we can do. But as a forum to present your views, that's fine. I'm glad you have it. We can do that all night long. But there's very, we represent the people, and I feel like we represent all people. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dempsey.
Well, on a different note, public announcement time. The Cracker House is having their first Halloween party this coming Friday, the 21st. It's called Halloween at the Cracker House, a place so spooky it had to be moved twice. The old timers, you know it was moved twice. We are going to, it's from 6:00 to 10:00. We are going to have ghost haunting and paranormal investigation, exhibits from the Anatomy of the Death Museum in Mount Clemens, seasonal treats, folklore and tales, spooky candlelight tours of the museum, celebration of the vintage Bristol, Bristol, I think he says, yes, Halloween decorations. We have some very, very old Halloween decorations one of our members is displaying. I think it's going to be a fun time, $5. Come and spend from 6:00 to 10:00 with a lot of people haunting the Cracker House. And if you haven't been there before, I think this is really a good time to come and see it this way. So, I'm inviting everybody to come. You can call (586) 465-2488 for tickets. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Renzer.
The first thing I'd like to tell you is that our battling bathers have won five games in a row now. They are now in the playoffs. There is a game this week, Friday, at 7:00 o'clock. Please be there. Please be there with badly lettered signs and support them and cheer them on, and let them know that their community is there for them. The next thing I want to point out is Mr. Jantsch. Mr. Jantsch is a noted author. He's an author of books for children called, it took me a minute to remember these, Gruel, Snarl, and the Wild Zug Thing. And in my job for the county as the senior buyer, I bought his books for our Head Start program, and the kids loved them. So, thank you, and kudos to you, Mr. Jantsch, for being a published author in our community. As I told you last time we had these conversations, I'm not a TV person. I don't like TV. For some reason, it sucks my brain in, and I become incapable of speech and coherent thought. I am a reader. I have to read. I read all the time. I have to know what Jack Reacher is doing. I have to know what Mike Bodich is up to and which endangered animal species he is working on saving now. And if you don't know who those two people are, the library will tell you. They will give you their books. They're wonderful to read. They're challenging, and they're immersing, and I enjoy every single one of them. And I way, you know, I'll lay awake at night after I finish one going, "Where's the next one? Come on, where's the next one?" I didn't know who Dua Lipa was, and I'm hearing stuff about Dua Lipa, and I'm like, "What is this group?" You know what? The library showed me who and what Dua Lipa is. They're a musical group. You can get.
She's a musical person.
You can get their music there. You can learn these things. I am a horrible cook. I'm a horrible cook. I like to open a box or a can, but if I want to make something, I can go to the library. I looked for, my grandmother made creamed lima beans. Nobody has a recipe for creamed lima beans. Yes, I could look it up on Google, but it is not the same as my grandmother's. You know where I find it? In a cookbook in the library, because I went to a librarian and said, "I have to make them for Thanksgiving," you know? The library sustains me. It keeps me happy. It teaches me things. I wanted to, you know, I love Florida. I have a place down there, a little timeshare, and I wanted to learn about sharks, because right out in front of my place, I stare at the water, and there are dolphins every morning at 6:30, but we had some shark scares. So, I wanted to learn about sharks. Where can I learn that? At the library, because I like books. I like paper. I like things in my hand, right? And I'm going to tell you that the idea, the very idea, that somebody in this library is walking around showing pornography to children is false. That is not happening in our library. Anytime you need information, you know, I wanted to look up some information on a political opponent. I heard that there was an article in Gangware. You know where I found that? In the library's database, because I have a library card, and I can access those databases for any information that I want. If I wanted to learn how to change a tire, there's a database that will teach me that. I kind of know, but, you know, I call, you know, AAA all the time. The library is not just for grownups. It's not just for kids. It's not just for straight people, or black people, or white people, or LGBTQ. It is for everybody. The library sustains knowledge and holds knowledge for everybody. If you don't want your children to see certain books, then don't show them. Nobody is chasing them around the library saying, "Look, look at this." That's not happening. The mileage for the library is done. It's a done deal. It passed, right? We are going to have a brand-new library that is a showcase for everybody. It will have, it will have rooms for maker spaces. I dabble in stained glass. Maybe one day, I'll join the recreation program, but I can go to the library and request a room and lay out my glass and my lead cane, right? And make a pattern. I can join some friends to knit or crochet. I can join some friends to talk about this book we just read and why is Jack Reacher in Utah of all places? So, the library will have books. It will have computers. It will have interactive things. It will have new furniture. It will have bright lights and colors and new carpet, and it is going to be a place where everyone is welcome, where everyone will feel at home. And to think otherwise, to demand that our library be less than that is really very, is really very sad, and I pity the people who think that. Thank you.
I would like to first begin by, of course, welcoming Amanda to our staff for recreation, as our recreation coordinator. I can't tell you how proud I am that we have recreation again in Mount Clemens, that we can say. And to everyone who helped move that issue along, and it was not something that just happened overnight, so I would like to thank everyone who was involved in that and making it a priority, and thank the commissioners and the staff who made that a priority to bring that back to Mount Clemens, because it benefits people of all ages. It benefits the buy-in of our community, because we need our children to have experiences that are positive in this community. They need to meet their neighbors, and they can do that through recreation, even though they're not doing that necessarily in our schools. They can do that through recreation, and I'm proud that we were able to accomplish that. So, again, thank you, everyone who, who made that happen. SpooTacular, please make sure that you're coming downtown this weekend. My, my family and I will have a trunk now, apparently, on McComb Place. And, yep, we will happily be handing out lots of candy to everyone who comes to our car, so hopefully we get to see a great turnout, and hopefully everyone, cross your fingers, say prayers, whatever you do, that we have some nice weather. State of the City is happening. We had a lot of, well, State of the City happened on Friday, as Diana mentioned earlier. It was the Chambers fundraiser. It always happens at 8:00 AM on a Friday. And so, we've had a lot of complaints from residents in the past that that's not really accessible to the people who have to go to work, you know, and most people don't want to take a day off to come see the State of the City, and I don't blame them. So, instead of just being available on YouTube or to watch on cable network, we decided to have an evening event for, for everyone, anyone, but for residents in particular. So, we will hold a State of the City address on Thursday, this Thursday, October 20th, at the Karnes Community Center, so we welcome everyone to attend that event. I, again, will have my coffee talks in November. They are the second Tuesday and second Thursday of every month. The second Tuesday is at 9:30 AM at John's Family Grill. The second Thursday is at 6:30 PM at Black Cat Coffee. Black Cat has graciously stayed open for us a half hour longer so that we can have our coffee talks, so it's, again, accessible for those who work. I just want to mention, I'm really, really proud of our community this evening. If you've watched the news, somebody was trying to have this same discussion with two opposing sides in Dearborn, and what transpired was horrendous, with people yelling when others were trying to speak. It closed down a commission meeting. And was I afraid that that was going to happen here? I hoped that we had a better relationship with each other, that it wouldn't. But sure, it was in the back of my mind, because I saw what was unfolding there as something that could unfold here, but it didn't. And every single person should be very proud that we, as a community, sat and listened, even when we didn't agree. And our country could use a little of that. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart for not being jerks and for making the job of the gavel a little easier. And I hope that we can continue conversation. I hope that members of the library board that are here today, the members of the library staff that are here today, and the members of our commission, you know, we will continue to work and represent everyone. Again, we may not personally always agree, but we are able to separate those two jobs, and I hope that that continues. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Good night.